All right, 5:30 out of the council meeting. Order, roll call please.
Colston, Anderson.
Yes.
Mesa.
Yes.
Feltus. Conrad.
For the board.
Sinsala.
Yeah.
We have a forum. I will call the utility commission meeting. Order. Uh, take a little call with Tim Snadier.
Thomas.
Yes, sir.
Killian. Vouch.
Yes.
Wajni.
Yep.
Jacoby.
Yes.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Verification, Colston.
The agenda for the utility commission and the council with Colston at City Hall is taking part in Arcadia and Arcadia, Arcadia Canadian applies on the twenty-seventh of September by four thirty P M.
All right, we have twelve items on agenda, and entertain a motion to approve.
So, second.
Motion by Mesa, second by Feltus, changes. Clerk for call the roll.
Colston.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Mesa.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yep.
Sinsala.
Yep.
Conrad.
Yes.
Motion carries, public comment. Doc Fetch.
Ted Fetch here. Uh, I'm speaking again about our desire to have a skating rink or skating rinks in this community. I see we got a lot of activities related to ordinances and dances and all this sort of thing for adults, but I think it's a good idea to have some things for our kids uh, um, in the, the community, especially in winter time. Uh, the skating rink is uh, on that agenda as far as I'm concerned. I talked to the middle school principal and she did a query as far as uh, the desire for having this. About seventy percent of her kids said, hey, we'd like to have a skating rink. I've talked to the high school as well. Talked, and I haven't heard back, and then uh, the elementary, I haven't heard back from them. But uh, it was, I've talked to Eva and she's all for this as well. And I think it's important that we follow through this. Now is the time to get it done. Maybe Raul has more time to work with this, to help design and where this is going to be. But I'd like to see something more than me just talking about it by putting this on the agenda for the next meeting. And then we discuss it uh, to see if this is feasible, if we should do it, and/or how we're going to get it done. I talked to Chief Alberson, helping with taking care of the facility as far as flooding it and all this sort of thing. And he says we, we would help out. Of course, there's gotta be a coordination of cleaning it off and then flooding and all this sort of thing. But this has gotta be done right this time. Instead of the last time we did it, uh, things went awry, they didn't do it right, and then they blew out the berm on it. But we need to have a place so that is fairly level perhaps, or else a place where we can level it out. One suggestion Eva said was by the Joyce Wannick Center down there. And I looked at it and uh, there is some level areas there, but the thing is, is it might be on the soccer field or whatnot, so I don't know if that is where we want to do it. Or down by Schultz Park, that's another area. Um, and of course, maybe the old uh, horse pull tractor pull area might be a, a place to do it too. But, so we want to talk about it, I want to, I want to talk about, so we get some action.
Doc, maybe instead of meeting again and then coming back and talking, I just kind of discussed it quickly with Chad here. You and Eva, Raleigh, and Jeff want to come up with an idea and then bring it back, so you have an idea of what it would cost?
Yeah, for, to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say Schultz Park would be the best.
Well, there's already a place built behind Jane Weizenberger House up on the hill.
Or there.
There used to be ice skating rink three years ago, that's never went away, I'd say go with that.
I have a question for Mr. Fetch.
Yes.
Is, I don't anticipate using her, her budget to fund this?
That, that, that's what we gotta talk about.
That's what we have to discuss.
Yeah.
And what, what kind of revenue do we see this bringing to businesses and to the city? Any, any idea?
Revenue, it's not revenue for the city, it's just for the kids in the community.
I understand that, but, but at the end of the day, everything is...
It's not a moneymaker.
We can discuss that.
We can discuss that.
We can discuss that at the next.
Yeah, perhaps there is, you know, something related to that. We'll uh, get together with Chad and with uh, Raul and so.
And Eva.
You call a time, I can be at any time, so it's whenever you're available.
I'll get you, Doc, so I can set something up.
Okay.
I'll get Chad your number, he can give you a call, set something up.
See, there's a lot of Indian windows here that we can, that might be dealing with. But, the thing is, I'm looking for something for the, the kids of the community to do in the winter time. We're going to be hopefully activating the, the cross-country ski trails as well. And hopefully maybe we can get a, a disc golf course going and two, but I haven't heard from my designer yet. So that's all I have, and I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Doc. Any other public comment?
Public comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, my name is Tony Allen, and I actually live in this city as well. Um, I went to the Monday night um, meeting for the school board with the public. Um, and I would like you guys all know that I was pretty disappointed that our aldermen were not there, because this really was very effective in the fact that they implemented um, no busing for kids in town, which they should. But we had all these people there screaming and hollering about the Mexican population in our town, and sidewalks, no sidewalks and all that. But the example they used were ones that you guys voted on, that they went to Wilson Street, and you guys went to the top, them residents, and they voted that they did not want sidewalks. And you got these people in uproar because they don't know that kind of stuff. But what I'm here for is I just want you guys to know, they're bringing in that they should be, we should be translating for this community and all that, and these little kids are walking the sidewalks, yep, they should. They implemented the two-mile radius, but what I'm upset about is we have homes that have fifteen, twenty people because they're not living in single-family dwellings. We shouldn't have this problem with these children living multiple, like mom and dad, children, grandma and grandpa, sister and brother of family and six, ten children. So our school district has to worry about the ten children in the home that shouldn't even be living there. I think we do have something in the city limits regards to single-family dwellings and how many people should be living in a home. Is there any way to be able to?
Well, in a single-family home, it's hard to limit the amount of people they can have in their house, it's their home.
Sure.
If I want to have fifteen of my grandparents as well as my brother and sister.
Sure.
I can do that.
Yeah.
So uh, as far as limiting that, that's something we can't do. But as far as apartments, that is something we can't do. But I was at the meeting.
Sure.
Um, on Monday night, and it was brought up about um, Wilson Avenue.
Yep.
Um, this council wanted to put sidewalks on Wilson Avenue.
Yep.
And would have been paid for out of the Tiff's district.
And that's why...
However, however, there wasn't one person that lived on Wilson Avenue, excuse me, I take that back. There was one property owner from Highway ninety-three to Fairfield Avenue on either side of the street that said they were okay with a sidewalk.
Sure.
So this council at that time decided to back what the residents of that place wanted.
Right, no, I agree with that.
That's why we did that.
Yep.
It wasn't, it wasn't a choice of the city council, if it was the city council, there would have been a sidewalk on either one side or the other, or possibly both if we could have made it work.
Yep, no, I agree with that. And I think what I was wanting to understand and hear in the fact that these people that don't live in the city, so we've got a handful um, that are really pushing this issue and doing that petition and all that, that don't live in the city limits. They're all town people, but their children have bussing, so they're still doing this uproar. And they need to understand the situation of Wilson. They don't know that, but they're gonna say, oh, there's no sidewalks there, so they're pushing the issue. These kids can't, you know, walk on sidewalks. Well, to me, I don't think that was good. They repres, they didn't represent, they just went very arar, and I think that our council has to be there for these meetings.
It wa, to me, it wasn't really just, um, when I told Lance that, that the members of the public were really not that well informed of, that there wasn't a meeting, so.
Sure.
I found out because he called me and asked me to attend.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Not for a sec.
Any other public comment?
Hearing none, we'll move on to press, uh, old business approval meeting, number eighteen. So motion by Feltus, second by Mesa, changes.
Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Mesa.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yes.
Sinsala.
Yeah.
Conrad.
Yes.
Colston.
Motion carries. And we will move on to item eight A, discussion of the twenty-twenty wages. We have not discussed it at all, Raleigh has the utility commission discussed it at all.
Uh, no.
Well, that's good, so we're starting from the same thing then.
Yeah.
Um, here's a handout that I think Fritz requested. It should have everybody's wages on there. And I think last year we did a um, a dollar amount, not a percentage wise.
I think so too.
Um. Give me just a minute to take a look at this. Angela, you wanna lead some discussion in regards to give us a spreadsheet for the next time you commission meet, for the next time we meet? If we went for the percentage or if we went with a dollar amount, anybody has a, an idea to throw it out now? Uh, so we know where we can start.
We can, and I do believe that we had a percentage increase last year, although I think the utility commission um, on the water side, it may have been just a flat dollar amount, if my memory is correct. Um, and just so you guys know how we got to tonight, the personnel committee had a meeting in September. We, that personnel committee is comprised of Raleigh Thomas and Gary Vouch from utilities, and Marla Colston and Dan Sinsala from the council. Um, and there were a few other things on the, the agenda. Uh, wages was one of them, and in talking through it a little bit, they thought a joint meeting with both bodies just, um, you know, now is the time that we need to be getting the budget finished and done. Um, we'll have an idea the next time we meet on where health insurance rates are going for twenty-twenty. Uh, we don't know that for sure yet.
Carrie, is there something you wanted to add about the personnel meeting? Do you guys have a feeling one way or the other?
No, no. Uh, in fact, my personal feeling is that the wage shouldn't be on a personal committee. Personal committee, in my always opinion, was if there was a dispute amongst employees, those type of issues. So I looked at it and said, I don't know, okay, it's kind of like a minor discussion, but to me, that belongs to these two boards.
Well, I think we all have great employees throughout our departments. Um, we treat them well, we want to retain our employees. Um, just comes down to what cost, oh, and what we can afford. And I know we've talked around, I've been on here in the last four years, whether it should be a percentage or, or a flat fee. Does anybody have an opinion one way or the other?
I think it should be a flat fee.
I, I agree with you.
Flat fee, you can tell her about it.
No, yeah.
A dollar, sorry, dollar amount as compared to a percentage. Um, I think last year, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, I think we did something close to like the three percent.
Yes.
What we did, or was it two percent? Just to come within budget means. Is that something that the comm, the commission wants to do similar?
Uh.
Not, I mean, not that we need a motion or anything on it tonight, just as long as we can get everybody looking at, so when we put the budget together, we know close to where we're at.
Yeah. Similar, the hardest for us is to uh, set the wage on the office personnel that we share with the city. That's the, the hardest part.
And that's just because not knowing exactly what they do or what they're responding to. Just want to make sure.
Well, we know what they do for us, but we don't know what they do.
And, you know, it says uh, half-time or three-quarter time, and I, you know, that's great.
Is it all kind of quiet?
Well, I was anticipating getting a, a tally from the year is what I really wanted. Is that possible to get that?
Yeah, it's possible to get it, I, I don't have it on me.
Well, I figured if you did, you'd handed it to me.
Look at tally.
So you want a year-to-date, or you want what it, what it, what one employee costs all in, or one employee?
Year-to-date would be fine.
Just as a, like a full generalization of what we spend on employees, is that what you're looking for?
Well, I guess I see here, we got a couple of people at ninety-nine thousand dollars a year, and then we're still paying them forty-eight dollars oh-three an hour for being on call. I mean, I, I'd like to see how many call-overs there are and, and, and so on. I, I'd, I'd like to see what we're spending.
Do you understand my question?
I do.
Other comments, questions? So I think the way we can budget Angela, and correct me if I'm wrong, Raleigh, is we'll go close to around three percent, and make it a, a dollar amount, and you and Chad and I can work on that and bring it back for your next meeting, which is about two weeks from today.
Well, I'm not even sure, when is our next meeting?
Well, we'll be having one with Golden Pump in October, I don't know if you want to have that on there or...
Probably not, what we're doing with Golden Pump, I would just deal with them.
Um, do you want to wait until November sixth, or do you? I mean, we can, but if you, if you want us moving along on the budget, we're gonna have to have the budget hearing, we're gonna have to have it published by then.
Then we, we'd have to have another meeting, because the Golden Pump meeting is gonna last long, wait, don't.
Would you guys, would you guys, um, I'm not sure, but that may be near, closer near the end of the month. Would you guys be available to meet with the council during the next council meeting on the sixteenth?
Steve is a...
So when's it?
We can make it a different night, Raleigh.
Well, it's just that I gotta be out there by six on a Wednesday night.
Um, I, I'll look at my schedule and we'll figure something out.
Okay.
Do something other than a Wednesday of that week, maybe Tuesday or Thursday.
Yeah, we got a five-past three Wednesday, but I can readjust it here or there too.
Is there any, if there's any other information you guys want that would help me maybe with the decision on wages, I can...
Because then we can put it into the budget and get that, because it's gonna come rather quick, you know?
Can we change that plan for you to Tuesday?
It was Tues, Tuesday.
Yeah, I, I got a Wednesday and Tuesday, I think we did switch to Tuesday, so we did open.
So Tuesday the fifteenth?
Uh, Tuesday the fifteenth, Friday.
Okay. Let me look at my schedule and we'll figure something else to meet. We have a Tuesday or Wednesday, maybe, and if we have to do it earlier than five-thirty, I'll just schedule to be in town.
Well, it's hard for you guys, you're working.
Well, most of us are in print, so.
I'm used to it.
Any other information from here that we need Angela to get an idea? So she has an idea of where, where we're at, where we're gonna be going. All right. Raleigh, if you want to adjourn.
All right. So we're gonna be paying, we should do adjourn.
Also.
Motion by Gary.
Second by James.
All clear to say aye?
Aye, aye.
Both. Gary, being adjourned.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck.
This is big.
I didn't sleep well last night after watching that baseball game.
I did talk to Carl, so we can... I know the rest of the conversation, we move on to uh... Like eight C. I ate C on, because I told him we probably weren't gonna get to him until six or six-thirty, so I'm setting the air close to six. Let me shut that for me. You got it, Tony? See, discussion of possible action on ordinance, uh, two thousand nineteen dash seven, and ordinance regulating hours of operations for premises licensed to sell alcohol or record to the city.
So, I came in kind of in the middle of this, but um, what Terry has proposed here is, what, what you had happening was by, by ordinance, places like Quick Trip, um, that sell alcohol during, and that are open after business hours that you're allowed to sell alcohol. By ordinance, they were technically, I guess, supposed to be closed uh, during those times. So what this revision does is allow uh, those class A liquor licenses that have extended hours like Quick Trip um, to be able to remain open for business, um, just against alcoholics or intoxicated measures past the hours by statute, nine AM or midnight.
Nine midnight, yeah. Yeah. Makes sense.
Yep.
I entertain a motion to...
So.
Second.
Motion by Feltus, second by Colston. Clerk will call the roll.
Mesa.
Yes.
Feltus.
Yep.
Sinsala.
Yeah.
Conrad.
Yes.
Colston.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion carries. We're already past you, Carl. I'm just kidding.
And you're gonna owe me a cup of coffee.
Well, that's not bad. I'm easy to come with. We'll go back up to item eight B. Discussion of possible action on ordinance, uh, two thousand nineteen dash six, ordinance regulating dance halls in the city of Arcadia. And reminder that we're talking about Mateo's business now, but it's dance halls in general, so. Put in all the changes, I did speak with Carl and Carl relayed, but Mateo had a concern about being closed at midnight, and everyone out at twelve-thirty. Um, and I told him, you know, we did discuss it at length last time, I'm having it the same as bar. Uh, we have it then, we came back to twelve, um, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, we're looking at something, some sort of a happy medium, if they can have dances at the pavilion or other places in town. Till a, till a certain time, why would we be more restrictive?
Okay, well, first off, Juan asked me to do a speaking.
Well, that's not fair.
Well, first off, on behalf of Juan, Norma's wife, and myself, we'd like to thank the council for acting uh, with their hard deliberation and consideration on this proposal, and that Juan is excited about opening up this new business, okay? And we realize that it's not strictly for Mateo, it's for anybody that wishes to do something of this nature. So you're not just making this uh, adoption here for him, okay? But anyway, uh, before you adopt the ordinance, uh, we've spoken in quite some detail that the Hispanic community knowingly likes to go a little later. They normally don't start their parties a lot of times till nine o'clock. And so he's asking for a possibility of going to two o'clock at the latest, but um, he is also willing to do this. As a matter of fact, we just got done talking about it. I'm a good friend of Juan, I got a party there, oh, Juan, come on, I gotta have one more beer yet. Well, Juan is gonna have a hard time turning down a close friend. So what he is very highly concerned, uh, concerned about is having someone in there that's gonna say, no, it's done. So he's considering hiring, um, like a security person that's gonna be in there to close it, period. Now, the two o'clock, we're open for a compromise of some sort. Uh, we, we've talked in quite some detail on, on quite a bit of it there. Uh, so, but whatever the council deems, we will abide by. And I say we as Norma and Juan, okay? Um, I would ask two other questions, and then we're out of here here, so you guys can talk it over, and you don't have to worry about nothing, unless you're gonna have a question for Juan and Norma after we get done here. But we do have two other questions, and I think the one I just got answered outside. Um, he wants to put in a fire suppressor system, and I believe we just come over and see you, Angela, at City Hall for getting the permit to dig into the road and a possible closure of the road because of de-watering and things. And then once, once that's all done, then we would most likely get together with Raleigh to have somebody come and repave it and things there, so uh...
The water department usually takes care of all that.
Oh, they do, okay.
May I ask, how big a line do you need to make?
Uh, we're going to the six-inch line.
Into the building.
Into the building, because that building is gonna be all on its own, totally. For the fire suppression system and for the water needed to have the sinks, the hot water heater, the bathrooms, everything. It's gonna be totally sustained by itself, totally.
Okay, I'll just keep it.
If you, if you get the, the permit from City Hall, the water department will put it in and, you know, dig what they need to dig and then know where. You know, whether, probably won't get paved anymore this year. I mean, it, it, I just know from other projects around town, they never get paved right away, so.
Well, Gary's, Gary's big concern was to get a reputable company. Uh, the company that we're, as a matter of fact, we're meeting with them tomorrow at seven-thirty is McCune out of uh...
Holman?
Is it Holman or Alaska or something like that? They're, they're, yeah, McCune, is that, is that's, yeah. And so, these guys have been around, they're a big company, they can get in and out, they know about the de-watering, everything, lock, stock and barrel.
Yep.
Uh, so we'll get together with Angela to get started with it. Uh, we're meeting with them tomorrow, once they say when, we'll have to, I'm sure, close the street off for de-watering, because...
What street are you coming off of?
Grant, Grant.
Okay.
Grant, we had, uh, we met with Boo and with Gary, and we looked at the line going down...
Green Bay.
Green Bay Avenue. Boo thought it'd be a lot easier out on Grant Street. Plus, that's a newer line. The line on Green Bay Avenue, Boo could not tell you exactly how old that line is. And he says, you go out there, we might open up a big can of worms. He estimated that to be in there for many years. Because Green Bay Avenue has been there for how many years and nothing's really been done on that street?
Probably longer than I've been alive.
Yeah, there's a very good chance of that, very good chance. Um, so, um, nineteen seventy-six. Is that when it was worked on there?
The water and sewer was?
That's when it was paved, my house.
Oh, paved? Well, I don't think the water was...
Well, more than likely, yeah. More than likely, that was untouched, so, who knows?
Carl, and if you guys, if you need somebody there tomorrow, you know, reach out to Gary or, or somebody from the water department.
I can remember if it was Angela or, or Sally gave me Gary's telephone number and I, so I'll just give him a call and remind him. I was told he was gonna be here, so. But in any case at all, we'll get that worked out with those guys and get that going. Um, but then the other concern that uh, when reading over the ordinance, uh, Article seven, seventy-four at the very end of the paragraph, I'm not an attorney. And uh, it's a little bit confusing. It says, uh, anniversary is a special occasion, but shall not include on premises a license. Are you requiring him to have a beer license? I know that was discussed in quite some detail at one point in time about the sale of beer to the people that are gonna be in there, things. Uh, is that, he, he just wants to know, that's what he wants. Because that's, I don't know, unless you guys can make heads or tails of this, I could not. And I'm, as I said, I'm not an attorney.
I had a question marked by that too, Carl.
You did, okay, yeah. And, and he's willing, he's willing, he's willing to get the beer license, uh, and things there.
Well, intoxicating liquor is, that's different. That's, that's like a liquor license.
No, 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 we are not talking...
Yep, no, no, I'm just saying that's what this is saying though. It says intoxicating liquor.
Yes, but what, what I'm referring to, that was the only place that I could see referring to any kind of alcohol license, I'll put it down. Unless, unless I missed something in, in the rest of it there. But that's the only place that I could see anything as pertaining to any kind of licenses to intoxicating liquor, beer, wine, or whatever. Now, he's, he's really not thinking about wine, mainly beer. really not thinking about wine, mainly beer. That's, that'd be the only thing that he would most likely get. Liquor license, he does not want liquor license in that.
He can't have one.
No, but, I mean, he doesn't, he doesn't even want one. Even if there was one available, he does not want a liquor license in there. So if we could just get a clarification on that.
If, if he does not have a liquor license for that facility, if he doesn't become a licensed, you cannot sell alcohol. Anyone coming in would have to basically have a party and give the alcohol away. You can't.
Well, he's not going, he's.
No, I know that, but someone, that someone that renting the dance hall for a party or something can't charge a cover and then, you know, charge people for alcohol.
Oh, okay, I see what you're, okay. Yeah, he's, he's not gonna be running this as a bar or anything else. Because the only other time that we had talked about beer brought into the building was who can these people buy it from? Does it have to come from a beer distributor? Do you remember at that one meeting? And I don't know what the, what the clarification ended up to be. And that's where Juan, and I am too, a little confused as to the beer license here. He's willing, he's willing to ask you for a beer license if that need be, which would, I think, clear up a lot of things. But he's still not looking to sell beer on the premises. Is that what you're, that's what you're relating to, right?
We are, and this ordinance is not for Juan.
No, I understand that.
And so, you know, to make it, I don't think that, I took from the conversation with the council that they didn't want to necessarily require every dance hall to have a liquor license. So they, they made the ordinance more generic where a dance hall could certainly apply for one. And if you had, if, if he applied and got approved and had a liquor license, then, correct me if I'm wrong, Chad, then they would be responsible for buying from a wholesaler. People couldn't bring it in. They would have to purchase everything through.
Okay, but that would be up, up for the applicant.
Okay, so then, so we're just having the building without a beer license, a wine, and I'm gonna say liquor also, beer license, wine license, and/or liquor license. Nothing can be sold in the building. They have to buy it out, whether it's from Quick Trip or from Mateo's. They have to bring it in themselves.
They can serve it, but they can't charge.
They can serve it, no charge.
But they can't charge.
Right.
If they charge.
Or even a covered charge.
Yes, I was just gonna say that.
But if they charge in any fashion, then they would have to have a beer, wine license, beer or wine license.
Okay. All right. So we got that?
Clear.
Clear?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see, was there something?
Because I think that's what we talked about last time. And that's, I thought would be the best to kind of broad brush everybody into it.
Well, that's what was talked about, but it, I don't think it really got settled that night, did it?
No, but we got more clarification from attorneys. That write this that we can then cannot understand and then have to ask them again. It's job security, Carl.
What's that?
If they write something that you can't understand and then you have to go back and ask them again, then they can charge you again.
And we can say if the attorneys aren't here. Did you have any questions of Mateo or Norma?
Then you got answered the que, he also had another question because of the charge as far as the sprinkler because it requires more.
Yes, I talked to Gary and I got that clarification. Because he was just wondering, you know, so that he can somewhat set his budget too. And what's, what's this charge for? Well, first off, he's gonna be using water because the building is gonna be fully self-sustained. Okay? The only thing that might not be done right away, but he's got it set up for, is to meter each separate building. But I think it's foolish. Just put one meter on for all three buildings and have it over with.
Yeah, that's a meter charge, right?
I think Mateo could work with Amy, might go and give you a better idea of what that would cost. Correct? Angela?
Amy Engineering?
No, no.
No, we have, I mean, we have our water rates are set. We know that you have, there's gonna be a six inch line coming in on fire protection.
Yes, yes.
We can, we can go to the rate sheet and tell you what the monthly cost will be.
If you go to the city hall and talk to Amy, she'd be able to give you what that would be.
Okay.
One of the girls, not.
Amy's the new Angela.
Not Angela, not.
She's a utility lady.
Okay.
She's not Angela, she's not Sal.
Well, again, again.
She's not bad.
Again, on behalf of Mateo and Norma, they would really like to thank you for the consideration. And like I told Mateo and I told Rob, doesn't hurt to ask, whatever you guys deem necessary and what is good for the community, they're happy with. They, they just wanna get the business going and we'll go from there.
And like I told you, Carl, Carl and I'll tell you too, but you as well, you know, we're excited for new businesses in town. I think we're all in the grants of that. There was much discussion last time when, you know, we're excited to get this off the rug, off the ground. We just have to look at it as, sometimes it's a slow process, but we wanna look at it as a, it's gotta, everybody's gotta be involved. And it's not just you. We're not worried always about the person, the first person that applies, it's the third person, you know? And that's, that's usually what takes a little time.
And they understand that now. When this whole program started, or project started, you just see forever and ever and ever. Well, finally it's taking place, one of the, one of the, one of the best things was when the state guy says, well, get the building all by itself. What have we gotta do first? Get the mailbox number changed for just that building. I went over to city hall, Chad didn't know about it right away. And he says, well, you come on this day, talk to Angela. And I talked to Angela. I do believe, I said, but I believe two days later, I got a letter in the mail from Angela.
No, it was from Chad.
What's that?
It was from Chad.
Oh, okay.
She just schooled me how to do it.
Oh, she did. Well, anyway, two days later, we had our own address for that particular one building. Okay, so, so it's, it's slowly coming. And finally McCune is gonna come and take a look at the street and all that. And so, so we appreciate everything that you guys have done. And we'll get this, we'll get this going. And hopefully we'll have a party in there one day and you guys can come over.
I know he serves good food.
Yes. Do you have any questions of Mateo and Norma? Do you two have any questions that you wanna come up with?
Not right now.
Not right now?
Because there's only one question about time.
Yeah, yeah. And then you guys gotta decide and talk it over.
Yeah, it's an open meeting.
Yeah, I'm perfectly okay with bar time. I mean, it's open that long. I mean, why can't they be? It's inside his building. That's what I feel.
What are the regulations on like the pavilion? Is that the same as bar time?
Yes.
Probably partly.
Probably the liars.
Yeah, the liars club rents the house. They might have their own rules and regulations because, just because you're, I mean, we have to, again, look at it as.
How long do we allow it? What is the max up there?
I think that's two, I would say.
You gotta be out there.
I would have to look into it. I don't know for sure.
Do you know Angela?
What's that?
How long a dance can go at the pavilion?
I think.
I don't, I think the music is one.
I think.
I think the music is one.
I think it's one o'clock because, because of like the big events that gives them time to get them out of there, you know, by.
Right.
And then that would make sense because usually once you shut the music off, people don't tend to stick around much longer.
But some do. I mean, would one o'clock work for you?
Yeah, one o'clock, you know, shut down the music and people can start leaving. So we got.
I mean, it's like, was it like anything? It doesn't matter. People don't leave right away, you know? If you say, if you say two, you know, it's no different than bar business. You say two thirty, and you close the lights at two fifteen.
They're pushing it sometimes.
Two forty-five, you're still trying to remove them.
Well, the one nice thing we have here too, being that, so this is the first, if this does not work and the two o'clock, I'll just stay with two o'clock. If two o'clock does not work, there's nothing says that you can't reopen this ordinance and change the time too.
Yeah, we can amend it.
You can amend it, yes. And so, but as I say, whatever, whatever you people decide on, Juan and Norma are happy to abide by.
I'd rather just say, my personal opinion is the music has to be done at, say, one o'clock. And you give them an extra, like an hour and it has to be empty at two.
On, on a normal night, two thirty on the weekend, just like the regular bars, right?
No, that's not what I was saying, but.
Oh.
Because I was, I was gonna just do it similar to what the pavilion was. That was my idea, you know? But I'm not the one who has a vote, so.
Do you think we need to know what the pavilion does before we act on this?
Not necessarily.
I, I.
The pavilion is in a, the pavilion is in a park with, I mean, granted, this isn't a business district.
It was one back in ninety-nine. I know that. And it's changed since then.
Right. You know, and that's.
Twenty years.
And that's, don't, don't say that.
Raleigh, what do you got?
Every once in a while, like Nick has a band in his bar at Sportsman's. How long do they?
Usually one.
Well, but there's doesn't regulate.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing that there's gonna be a lot of people at this place at times. This is just my way of looking at it. What happens if you tell him he's gonna have his music off at one thirty and everyone should be out by two o'clock? And I'm looking at from a police force side of it. Then the police force will deal with that. And then he's still going talking to the stranglers that, that they gotta drag out of Upchuck by their shoestrings at two thirty. But the police would be, Mateo's deal would be done over there and then the bar.
What does Diana do?
That gives him, I mean, he wants two o'clock. You guys settle on what, midnight before? You're kinda even giving him a little leniency, not even splitting the difference at one thirty and there's still, you know, half an hour, you know, you know?
So you're saying, shut down music at one, party is done at one thirty, they're out no later than two?
Well, I.
That's what I'm kinda gathering.
When I was that age, I was fine.
That's what I think.
I'm saying one thirty with the music and what do you guys say?
Two o'clock though.
What do I think?
Yeah. I mean, I know what you said last time. You said two o'clock that.
I'm not, the music, one o'clock, but I, I don't think that we should be able to tell that business that the patrons gotta be gone any sooner than what we tell the tab.
Right, I agree.
I mean, it's gotta be fair across the board.
Well, I knew that's what you said last time, so I just wanted you to reiterate.
Moving on, I'm gonna make a motion. We, music done at one o'clock, have to be out by two thirty.
Is that Sunday through Saturday? Or do you have special times on the weekend? Or during the week?
Two o'clock during the week.
Two o'clock during the week. First, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Two thirty?
Two thirty.
Sunday's, Sunday's two o'clock.
Well, two o'clock.
Friday and Saturday.
Friday, Saturday, two thirty then.
Yep.
Angela's gonna ask for clarification unless she's.
I'll second that.
Music off at one.
Music off at one.
Dance hall cleared at two o'clock.
Except on weekends, Friday, Saturday. Friday, Saturday, dance hall cleared at two thirty.
Yeah, I'm gonna get myself a pair of dancing shoes. Let me do it. Right?
Yeah.
So can you clarify what bar time is?
Two thirty, I believe.
On Friday at seven thirty. You don't know, two o'clock for us. Two o'clock for us. That's what they tell me.
Except, except for New Year's Eve they can still open all night. And you didn't have a problem with the opening at a certain time? And the reason we did, the reason that was discussed, and I didn't, you and I didn't discuss that.
We, we pretty much understood that.
Because some people like to work around rules too. So they would open up a half hour later. They would close, kick everybody out and say, come back in a half hour.
Come back. No, the eight o'clock was fine.
Okay, and the reason we said eight is, we understand, you know, if you have birthday parties, wedding showers, or those type of events, they wanna get in there earlier.
Well, the one thing that pointed out right away is that if somebody wants to have a first communion, well, hey, they're gonna have a first communion, come there for a party. They don't have to be there at two, three o'clock in the morning, but eight o'clock is good. They can come in and set up a few decorations of some sort, non-flammable decorations.
You got a suppression system in there with a six inch line.
We have a suppression system in there, yes. But, but the eight o'clock, the eight o'clock was fine. You know, in between time, I got a kind of a charge on for cleaning purposes. Well, if the party is all done at one thirty, he's gonna be too gosh dang tired to go back in there and clean.
But, but some places, some places hire somebody to come in and clean. But if it's, if they're there to clean, that's not.
We can't regulate that.
And so, so we didn't even worry about that.
If he's refinishing the floor, we can't.
Clean up a lot of floors in bars after hours, so.
Yes, yes. And so I.
He's got a reservation in the morning. He's gonna be there after hours to clean.
Yeah, so.
Well, Carl's retired now, so maybe he'll help you out if you need help.
You know, a fine gentleman, years and years ago, he says, Carl, he says, I'll tell you what, when you get to that retirement age, he says, you're gonna just love those golden years. First off, give me my silver ones back. But then second off is, he got right up to my nose and he says, but when you retire, remember two things. Two things? What's that? N-O. And I didn't. But I'm quite active. I don't mind. It gives me something to, you know, I'm gonna have a lot of fun, I think, helping Juan and Mateo, Mateo and Norma getting this going. And so I'm learning a lot.
That's good.
So I have found out I will never run for city council.
Papers have to be out in December. Elections are in April. Any other comments, questions? Motion was by Feltes, second by Conrad, clerk will call the roll.
Could you clarify that idea please? That motion?
The motion is Monday through Thursday, they have to be out at two o'clock.
Sunday, Sunday.
Or Sunday, Sunday, Thursday, they have to be out by two, Friday, Saturday, two thirty.
Okay, but music's done at one.
Music done at one.
Okay.
And I missed the motion and second.
Motion was by Feltes, second by Conrad.
Feltes?
Yes.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Conrad?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Masek?
Motion carries.
You want to tell a thank you? Yes. Thank you very much for the chance.
We appreciate it. We look forward to it. And I know the first party you have down there, you will get an invite, right?
Did I tell you before, that place is not only for Latinos, it's for whatever who need it. Okay?
Whatever thing about get married, I'll take that in under advisement.
That could be your first wedding, right there.
Yeah.
First.
Rich.
Well, his, not his first, but.
I ate, I ate the other day over there. It was good.
Yeah, somebody killed me.
Very good food.
All right, all right. Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Move on to item eight B, discussion of possible ac, action on ordinance two thousand nineteen dash eight, amend sewer rates in the city of Arcadia.
So move.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Sure.
Yes.
By Mazek.
How, how do we declare when we have to raise the, the rates?
Okay, this is an industrial rates only. This doesn't affect the residential rate. We, we go through and it's, it is based on our, our estimated usage, our current usage from the last year. And then we, we look at the Oldham Pumps or Pilgrims estimated usage for the next year to, to come up with like the flow, the Ollie and Bosporus rates. We actually had a mid-year meeting with Oldham Pumps and Pilgrims in July. And they were not producing as, as much as they had estimated in their budget numbers last year. So there was kind of a revancher art fall. And instead of getting one big bill at the end, they actually asked for a rate, mid-year rate adjustment on the industrial rates so that they would get them where they needed to be. But we're gonna be meeting with them here in October and November. And the utility commission will be looking at the rates and charges to see what, where we need to set our rates for twenty twenty.
Okay. They use a lot of water.
Yeah, I, I just didn't know the process.
Some of the city's waters.
I'm sure of that. Everything they do uses water.
Comments, questions?
Should that be stated that amend the sewer use rates for industrial?
I, I can make that amendment.
But I think, I think we have to adjust it all.
Well, section B is only industrial. If you look at the ordinance, section A lists out all the residential rates.
Okay.
And we're only adjusting the.
Well, how does that get declared when we do it for residential?
I mean, how do we do that?
How, how do we know that we can do that or why we would do that?
Well, that comes to the council every year to adopt this.
But does it have to come from the public service commission?
No.
It's wastewater is not regulated by the PSC, water and electric are. So the utility commission looks at the rates and charges, looks at their big customer estimated usage and, and come up with rates.
Okay.
And then they have to bring those rates to the council.
Thank you.
But yeah, the PSC doesn't, it was a waste water. All right, clerk will call the roll.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Conrad?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Masek?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Item eight E, discussion of possible action, special meeting paper myself for two um, core of engineer meetings that I attended last week.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Feltes, second by Conrad, Mesa and C.U. Grinna. Uh, I attended two meetings, one was in regards to.
Oh, what the heck was that, train?
Well, that was the one I really remembered, the, the first one really got talked about for about like two and a half hours and for the most part, nothing was really discussed, this, some guy from the core of engineers wants to do some sort of a study on the city of Arcadia, but it comes back that they might want us to put more money into it. And I said, we're not putting any more money into the core project, because we already have our, in a core project, so. He said he had a hundred thousand dollars, so he's gonna look at a different way of utilizing it and get back to us, city of Arcadia, the other one was in regards to the section two oh five.
Have you heard, have you heard anything when, on this study, they said October it was gonna?
Well, they told us last, the twenty-fifth, but now they're looking at December.
No, we're gonna get, we're gonna draft.
Well, we're gonna get, we're gonna get a draft at the end of October.
A draft in October, which, I'll believe it when I see it, but then she said December will be a final.
Yes. When are we gonna start with shoveling some dirt?
Well, that will be the decision after that.
Okay.
There's been, so the railroad now is pretty adamant about having those tracks raised, so now the study hopefully doesn't get, um, derailed.
Good one.
That's a Conrad comment there.
We're, we're hoping that it doesn't get postponed any longer than the October for the meeting, now today, so that, that she's hoping that what they'll do is a kind of a, have a side piece to the agreement. Um, if that happens, if the engineering has to, to raise those tracks.
They, they know, I expressed to them, you know, like how disappointed, not to speak for all of you, but I know we're all disappointed how long this has taken. And how much, you know, how much their budget has increased and increased and increased and I did make them aware that we're, we're all a little disappointed in them, so. I didn't say the council, I said the city in general.
But, but I do believe raising them tracks is a benefit to Arcadia.
They, they don't want the main line, they don't want the, the lines they want to be the exact same height. However, the main line and the spur line, we're just talking on the way west side of this project, down by Ashley, down by the lifting station. Cause if we look at raising the tracks on this end, which is talked about, they don't know how much footage they have to come back to raise them without raising Main Street, which becomes another problem, then we have the DOT involved. Just to give you a.
I understand. One more question.
Clerk will call the roll.
Conrad?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mesa?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yeah.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Where are for you attend those meetings, I can shortly send you the information in the next one. Item eight F, discussion of possible approval of post for seasonal employees and operation departments for sewer moving. Entertained a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Feltes is our second.
Second.
By Holston. Comments, questions? Same thing we did last year, right?
Yeah, but we never really did it last year.
Oh, we didn't, well, we approved it to do it.
The reason, you know, I mean, we got our eyes beat shut in snow removal budget last year, wasn't it like almost double, Angela, wasn't it like forty-eight thousand dollars?
Yeah.
And we only got twenty-five in there, I'm just trying to think how, you know, let's face it, you know, you go and you rent trucks, they're eighty-five bucks an hour. You rent the big loader, that's a hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour and I've asked a, a few people around that I know have CDLs or, you know, and that expressed a little interest in it and I thought, well, maybe we should try that, you know, if you look at eight G, his last day was today. So now we're down to four people, we've got a couple months here barring a Halloween snowstorm.
Don't talk like that. But we've got a lot. I don't think anybody in the state of Wisconsin that's got money left.
Looking for dollars and cents, we got a couple months where things are a little slower, the grass mowing's gone, I mean, we got leaf pickup and so even, even a couple months, if, if we can throw an ad out there and see what kind of reception we get, who knows, maybe eight, ten guys will come, maybe we'll have all kinds of part-time out. And then instead of hiring out the snow, you know, hauling that night, if you can get a decent, you know, or qualified loader operator and a couple dump truck drivers, if they work nine to, or six thirty to three and come there at four and haul till eight, you know?
You can move a lot of snow.
Sure.
You know, and you pay them, you know, I don't know what we pay them, we'll have to discuss that, but even if you pay them seventeen, eighteen bucks an hour to drive a dump truck, you know, paying all the other stuff.
Well, we gotta do.
You know, all the burden.
We're gonna get rid of this whole issue fast.
You're probably at thirty, what, mid thirties for an employee with everything involved, Angela?
Benefit, oh yeah.
You mean mid, like thirty dollars an hour or you talking thirty thousand?
No.
Thirty.
Per hour.
Yeah.
Um.
Isn't the burden like forty-seven percent or something, so that's thirty bucks.
Well, especially if they take health insurance, yeah.
I, I don't have, I don't have any issue with it, is there any other discussion?
I say put the ad out there and see what you get.
Is it, is that something that the council usually likes to see, the, the applicants and approval of those or is that something that you just?
They have to pass our insurance anyway, right, as far as being an operator.
I think if Riley screens them and he's happy with them, so be it.
And they have to have a, do their driver's license.
Yeah.
We would do a back, they would have to do a background check and a drug screen.
Yeah.
For authorization, I, you're saying this kind of you is around.
If, if.
Might all work on that.
What would happen, Angela, if you had somebody that's currently in a, a pool for drug screening?
They get to join our pool too.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know how that works.
Yeah, if you have a CDL and you're, you're driving for the city, you're in our pool.
Yeah, I know that for a fact, cause I am employed by two people and I think it was the year before last, I think I took five random ones in one year.
That doesn't sound very.
I did enough to fill a pool in one year.
You passed them all?
All of them.
Study.
All but one.
Well, you know, I mean, that's just the way it goes, sure, it's random.
Any other questions? Four, five times a year.
In one year, random.
Clerk will call the roll.
Can I just ask, so this is not something he has to come back year after year, if he needs, like next year, if he needs to get a bigger pool, he can just kind of, kind of update you guys on?
Yep, I think if you keep us up to date, we don't need to.
I mean, it's never been, I don't think it's ever been done before, I think we should try it, cause maybe, on the other end of it, maybe we'd see a lot of, you know, dollars and cents results.
But I think, just to think outside, we've, just to think outside the box, I think you could utilize it for uh, um, more lawn, at the, at the fields. You can get some different people, you know, maybe they wanna work in the evenings or something like that, as a part-time job.
Right.
To give you guys something else, I mean, I know you guys, you're busy anyways, so, anyway. Clerk will call the roll.
Holston?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mesa?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yep.
Sensala?
Yep.
I'm staying.
Motion carries. Item eight G, Mr. My, Joe Miners?
Retired.
So move. I don't think we have to accept it, I think he already. Did you wanna say anything, Riley?
How long was he a player?
Thirty-four years.
Thirty-seven years.
Yeah, he had, what, maybe fifteen with the water and then twenty-two.
I have no idea how long they are.
Something like that, fourteen with the water and then the rest with the street departments.
I think, uh, bench in the park, some sort of, of recognition for that.
The dance of the tails.
Huh?
The dance of the tails.
You always wanna lead them.
I think you give them a break on the new city.
Yeah.
I think we can, I think we can come up with something, but I think if we're all in agreement that, you know, like thirty-seven years dedicated to any.
Sure.
One employer, I think it's.
And it'd be nice to have him come.
Very commendable.
Have him come to a meeting and we could get a.
Preferably like in October, late October or early November.
During deer hunting.
During deer hunting. First week in November. I think we knew that when this retirement was gonna happen, what type of the year it was gonna be, this will happen to small fishing and deer hunting, yeah. I mean, we wish him the best, you know, on behalf of the council and the city, you know, I know where he's not going anywhere, so.
You know, a couple years ago, Angela, we did what, five benches?
Well, um, actually, you know what, and I, I don't know that we put it in the minutes, but it was if people had worked for the city more than twenty-five years when they would retire, um, like Colgate and.
Bubbles.
Greg Jaleski and Ron Moga, um, got a, we put a concrete picking table in the park for them.
Each, one for each one?
I think there was five of them at that time.
I mean, they're nice to have up there, if they get utilized, that's great.
I think it's a nice thing, I, I think, let's discuss it, we'll bring it back to make, take formal action, but if you see Joe out and about, you know, please make sure.
Yeah, well, you ain't gonna see him unless you're in Zigley, really.
And you're on his land.
You ain't, you ain't gonna see him till December.
Yeah, I would not drive on his land, but I know where some of his fishing spots are, but I wouldn't go there either, those are kind of sacred grounds. So you got his name down in how many years?
I do.
Awesome.
And he did express, we, we had a discussion today before he left, about some possible part-time work for, so he would be one of the first people in the pool, so.
You did, you, you should just say we'll left to see if he's.
Yeah.
He's qualified, he's back. All right. Item ninety, approved bills of general, amount of one hundred sixty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars in money. Motion by Feltes is a second by Mesa. Questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mesa?
Yes.
Feltes?
Yep.
Sensala?
Yeah.
Conrad?
Yeah.
Holston?